Conference meeting of the Mobile County Commission, call the meeting to order. And I think we have about half of the Faith Academy senior class here today.
(laughing) A good-looking group.
We do, and as everyone knows, we always welcome Faith Academy government students, their senior year, to come down and shadow the commission and kind of see what, how the sausage is made, so to speak. So, and I have a whole list here, and if you guys want to stand, I'm going to introduce everyone. And so, here today with Commissioner Hudson is Alexander Wackoff, Bailey Polk, Liberty Brewster, Megan Sylvester, Olivia Howard, Megan Smith, Mary Mac Dempsey, Delaney McKinnon, Anna Grace Phrase, is it Phrase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Joshua Presley. Emma Lindsay, Lindsay? She's not here? Okay. And Emily Miners, is that correct? Miners? All right. And also here today with Commissioner Lutgood is De'Asian Jones. And here today with me is John Campbell.
John!
John, all right!
He sounds like a celebrity.
That's right. Sounds like I got the celebrity out of the group.
That's right.
Come on, John, bring your chair and sit up here with me. I don't really know a lot of background on the other students. I will say that John is the nephew of a good friend of mine of the county commission, former state legislator Chad Fincher. So, I did want to mention that because Chad was always a good friend to Mobile County when he was in the legislature. And so, sorry, I don't know the rest of your, any of your other relatives. Sorry, guys. But anyway, welcome to Mobile County Commission, welcome to the commission meeting, and I hope you, I hope this is very informative for you guys. And so, I think we'll move on now to Cherie and see if we have any speakers today.
Yes, sir, we have two speakers. Jay Watkins with Maynard Nexon P.C. is here to speak about Agenda Item 15, MTC.
Just to remind the speakers, if you don't mind, to state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, I'm Jay Watkins with the Maynard Nexon Law Firm here in Mobile. That's 11 North Water Street, Suite 24290-36602. This morning, I was here primarily just to answer questions regarding item number 15. Back in 2018, I came before this commission representing merchants Alabama LLC and MTC Logistics of Alabama. They were the group who constructed the large cold storage facility that's now operating at the port. It's the large gray building with the stripe if you're going down I-10 off to the left, right by the container terminal. Back in 2022, that facility was merged in with a company called Lineage Logistics LLC, and we got a permission from this commission for, or the consent of this commission, for the assignment of the project agreement that was entered into in 2018. As part of an incentive package, the city of Mobile and Mobile County each entered into a project agreement to provide some infrastructure improvements and some other incentive to merchants to come and bring their facility here. Where we are today, Lineage Logistics LLC and Lineage Logistics Services LLC are the parties that are out there operating now. Under the project agreement, we need to align the names of the current owners and operators under the project agreement so that the incentives, both at the state level, the county level, and the city level, are accounted for properly and are appropriately tracked, appropriately tracked. And so, we've been working with Mr. Ross to provide an amendment to the 2018 project agreement, which in essence changes the name of the operating companies that are out there, the ones that actually employ the employees, who will get the employment incentives, the one who owns the real estate, so that we can track that through the county tax assessor's office, so that the appropriate ad valorem tax abatements apply, and certain other state-level incentives. So primarily, this is just a housekeeping item to properly name the parties under the project agreement. So, we have the amendment prepared and drafted. Mr. Ross has been working with us on that, I believe. He's vetted that, and so it will be on your agenda Monday for approval and authorization to be executed.
Mr. Watkins is exactly correct. It's, and it's a, no, nothing changes for the county, there's no cost, it's just a, really, administrative matter for their record-keeping and book-keeping. I ask Jay to come since he could perhaps explain it better than I could, but it's no cost to the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
We have one other speaker this morning. Helen Wells with Mobile County Environmental Enforcement is here to talk about the last Operation Clean Sweep of the Year, which is coming up this weekend.
Okay.
All right.
Good morning, I am Helen Wells. I am, as Ms. Cherie says, with the Mobile County Department of Environmental Enforcement. We are located at 1150 Schillinger Road North. And good morning, recognizing the commissioners, Commissioner Dewitt, Commissioner Hudson, and Commissioner Lutgood. We are, to give you a little bit of what, who we are, we are under the umbrella of the Environmental Services with Ms. Tina Sanchez as the director. Our department, and let me just put a shout out there, we have a great department, we have great workers, consist of solid waste officer, public service supervisor, patrol officer, equipment operators, office staff, and public service workers. Our purpose is to assist the residents of Mobile County to have a clean and healthy environment. We provide annual clean sweeps for the citizens of Mobile County. The upcoming clean sweep is Saturday, December 9th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., if the weather permits, at 7195 Half Mile Road, Irvington, where we provide free services to the citizens and dispose of other items, of their items. We provide service to the citizens with free dumping and free disposal of electronics. Citizens are notified through social media, local news, and passing out of flyers. At the clean sweep, they are greeted with a warm welcome, and assistance is available for seniors. The items we accept are scrap metal, yard debris, electronics, furniture, appliances, household items, microwaves, and tires. Non-acceptable items are waste oil and oil filters, junk cars, boats, dead animals, pressure tanks, explosives, aerosol cans, household garbage, tubed TV and tubed computer monitors and roofing. Our past two quarters, which included the clean sweep and waste collection and disposal data, for the third quarter, District 2, we collected 9,960 pounds of scrap metal, 10 dump truck loads of trash, rubbish, and litter. We also collected 1,246 pounds of recycled electronics, and that was held in, on Hubert Pierce Road on April 1st. District 1, we collected 8,180 pounds scrap metal, 1 dump truck of trash, rubbish, litter, 2,036 pounds of recycled electronics, and this was at 12740 U.S. 43 in Assis, and that was on April 22nd. District 3, we collected 6,524 pounds scrap metal, disposed 3 dump truck loads of trash, rubber, and litter, 756 pounds of recycled electronics, and this was at Foul River on, Foul River on May 6th. Fourth quarter, District 1, we collected 15,100 pounds of scrap metal, disposed 6 dump truck loads of trash, rubber, and litter, 2,795 pounds of recycled electronics, and this was on Hubert Pierce, September 30th. For the total of the third quarter, scrap metal, we collected 31,884 pounds. For the trash, rubber, and litter, we did a total of 14 dump truck loads, and for the electronics, 4,038 pounds. The fourth quarter, we collected 15,100 pounds scrap metal, 6 dump truck loads for trash, rubbish, and litter, and we recycled 2,795, and that's, that was of electronics. We received great feedback from the community about the clean sweep. We are always asked, when is the next one? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Fantastic, that deserves a round of applause.
I had Danny request that, we have somebody here to talk about the clean sweep this morning, and I appreciate you being here and the wonderful job that you and your staff are doing, and you are correct. These clean sweeps are well-publicized in the community, and I know in my district, and it sounds like all the districts, that this has been a successful program, and so thank you for being here to give us an update on that today and remind us of the future dates of the clean sweeps. So, thank you.
No more speakers?
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on. Director Hodge?
Number 1, approve the list of claims. Number 2, approve appointment of Grace Abernathy as District 2 Administrator effective December 18th, 2023, for Commissioner, for Commissioner Connie Hudson. Number 3, approve application of SEFCO, a partnership for off-premise-only retail beer and table wine license located at 10654 Airport Boulevard. This is in District 2. Number 4, approve renewal of professional services agreement with Dogwood Protection Inc., any amount of 6,600 for the period of October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024, for annual website hosting and maintenance of the Mobile County Commission website, live streaming of the commission meetings, video uploads to the county's YouTube channel, constant contact, and addition of an accessible ADA widget. For Information Technology Department will be paid from Cost Center 001. Number 5, approve request of the voting machine warehouse to correct the address of the new polling place for Precinct 2 in the resolution adopted in November 22nd, 2023 minutes, Agenda Item 43, to read as follows. Number 6, excuse me, approve appropriation contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of 9,200 from District 2 education funds to purchase 40 HP OfficeJet color printers for John Will Elementary School. Number 7, approve appropriation contract with Mount Vernon Community Development Organization in amount of 5,000 from District 1 Commission Funds for operational expenses. Number 8, approve request of the Finance Department to correct EFP 124-24 and amend November 22nd, 2023 minutes, Agenda Item Number 10, to revise annual contract, amount of 50,000 to 54,365, and add 15,000 for a total annual contract of the amount of 69,365 from District 1 Education Funds for operational expenses at Ina Pullen Smallwood Memorial Library, also known as Chickasaw Public Library. Number 9, resend award of bid to Tal Power Systems, Inc., for Government Plaza Emergency Generator Repairs Radiator due to unresponsiveness of the contractor. The bid was awarded on August 14th, 2023, Agenda Item Number 31, for Facilities and Maintenance Number 10, reject all bids for 2023, 2024 detention intercom tests and inspection at various locations to bid exceeded the project budget and authorize rebid as 2023, 2024 detention intercom tests and inspection at Metro Jail and Barracks for the Facilities and Maintenance Number 11, authorize advertising for bids, Michael Square Revenue Commission restroom renovations for Facilities and Maintenance Department. Number 12, approve a change order, number 1, with H&amp;H Electric Company, Inc., for Government Plaza Auditorium light upgrade. The change will decrease the contract by 13,690, and the new contract total will be 209,090 for the Facilities and Maintenance Department. Number 13, authorize advertising for bids, floorfly remediation measures at Government Plaza for Facilities and Maintenance Department. Number 14, approve lease agreement with United Saints of America LLC, doing business as Chicken Salad Chick, and Mobile County Commission for one-year term with two-year, two-one-year renewal options, the first term commencing December 14th, 2023, and to authorize commission president to sign all necessary documents for the legal department pending legal review. Excuse me. Number 15, approve amendment to the project agreement previously entered into by and between the City of Mobile, Mobile County, Lineage Logistics LLC, Lineage Logistics Services LLC, and MTC Logistics of Alabama LLC, and to authorize the commission president to execute the necessary documents to the assignment and assumption agreement for the legal department pending legal review. Number 16, approve professional services agreement with Airwind, Inc., for one year from the date of execution and a total amount not to exceed 10,000 for providing packaged television commercials for each of the televised college football games held in Mobile County, and additional agreed-upon videographic work for the Public Affairs Department will be paid from Cost Center 001. Number 17, adopt a resolution affirming the county's intent to comply with the Construction Best Management Practices Plan for Mobile County Golf Course in regard to the City of Mobile's issuance of the land disturbance permit for the Environmental Services Department. Number 18, approve contract amendment, number 10, to Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Moffett and Nickel, Inc., dated June 23rd, 2021, to add additional engineering and design and construction engineering and inspection services for Cedar Point Phase 1 for the Environmental Service Department. Number 19, approve appropriation contract with the Town of Mount Vernon Veterans Memorial in amount of 8,375 from District 1 Funds for Town of Mount Vernon Veterans Memorial. Number 20, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in amount of 98,556 from District 1 Funds for the DEN Project for Mobile County Number 21, approve creating project number to provide additional funding in the amount of 1 million 30,000 from District 1 Funds to increase the monies in Africatown Historic Structure Renovation Scott Building, Africatown Hall for the Facilities and Maintenance Department. Number 22, approve appropriation contract with Mary G., Montgomery High School Parent Teachers Organization, in amount of 20,000 from District 2 Education Funds for choir risers and softball soccer school boards for Mary G., Montgomery High School. 23, approve request of the Community Correction Center to purchase 3 vehicles from the Revenue Commissioner's Office reappraisal inventory for fair market value as follows, and those vehicles will be replaced. 24, approve three-year professional contract with Abercrombie, Simmons, and Gillette to administer general and auto liability claims for the county effective January 1st, 2024, for the cost of 6,300 per month, year 1, and increasing 5% each additional year for Risk Management Department. 25, approve request of the City of Chickasaw Board of Education to call and order a special election on February 24th, 2024, to determine whether a special ad valorem tax, district tax, at the rate of 3 million for 30 years, for the exclusive benefit of the public schools in the city of Chickasaw, Alabama. Number 26, consider taking the following action of bids. 27, approve a renewal of subscription with Malware Bytes, Inc., in amount of 21,84230 for Malware Bytes endpoint detection and response for the Revenue Commissioner's Office will be paid from Cost Center 009 and Cost Center 03A.
Commissioners, we're going to change item 27 to reflect being paid from the reappraisal fund, Fund 120. And split with the general fund.
Reappraisal in what?
General fund. It's being split, the costs are being shared between reappraisal and the general.
28, approve a 36-month agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation from CPC Office Technologies State of Alabama Contract for one copier, any amount of 13733 per month for the Public Works Administration Office. 29, approve amendment to the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan, approved August 1st, 2022, to award funding as identified below to the following projects, and to approve revising the previously awarded project for the Biula Battery Water Distributing, Distribution System upgrades for the purpose of changing the ARPA funding from the Infrastructure category to the Revenue Replacement category.
I wanted to give a, just a quick update on the Mental Health Court initiative. I had a very recent conversation with Judge Pipes, that he is working in conjunction with Community Corrections as well as AltaPoint, and I've also spoken with our district attorney, Keith Blackwood. They are all working in conjunction, it's really coming together. They presented their proposal to, with all the details, to Volkert, and what they're proposing, they've already identified the judge that will be handling the Mental Health Court. But what they've done is, they are anticipating a three-year startup period, and that's their, that's why they asked for the $3 million, a million dollars a year for three years. And after that point, my understanding is that they will have other sources of funding coming together to be able to continue the funding of that Mental Health Court program. But, so that's why the initial $3 million was there, it just wasn't clarified exactly how it would be used. But the, the million dollars will, will cover everything that will be necessary and needed to, to begin that program, housing, temporary housing, and transportation cost, and there's some, some of the medications that will be needed, that's all part of, of what's in that million dollars a year. So, I just wanted to give you an update, that's kind of how it all kind of laid out, that's why the original cost was there. So, if you would, I know as we go forward, there may be another round, another phase, that, if, if it appears on there again, then, then I would, that's what this is about, that's why the extra funding is needed.
All right, thank you.
Well, Judge Pipes and Judge Wright came by to, I talked to him as well.
Good, good, good.
And they, he said that they should have some idea about the numbers of people to be served by May.
Okay.
And so, that'll give us a good barometer of what's going to be needed, depending on the numbers.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Number 30, approve memorandum of understanding between the Mobile County Commission and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for the Mobile County Sheriff's Office, providing Aleah will supply one NEC desktop kiosk solution to the Mobile County Sheriff's Office to assist in the collection and maintenance of criminal history data at no cost to the county. The county will reimburse Aleah the annual maintenance costs for the equipment in an estimated amount of 2,400 will be paid from internal Mobile County Sheriff's Office funds. 31, approve project agreement among Mobile County, City of Mobile, Industrial Park Board of Mobile County, and Scannell Properties LLC, whereby the county and the city will each contribute up to $2 million for roadway improvements for the industrial, commercial, park, and warehousing distribution center located at southeast corner of Todd Acres Road and Cooley Man Road in Mobile County, and to authorize the county president to sign all necessary documents associated with the project agreement for legal department. The county's approval is subject to the Mobile County Council's approval of the project development agreement and the approval of the requisite permits by the United States Army Corps of Engineers.
I'm sorry, I mean, I...
The 772 public notice was advertised in Atlanta on Wednesday, November 29th, 2023.
David Rogers is here from the chamber answering questions, if there is any. If, or you wanted him to say anything where we are on the project, or, I mean, I think you're pretty up to date, but he's here, if there are any questions.
And, and also to let you guys know that on Monday, we will have Barry Vitor and the, and David Salinas, who is with Scannell Properties, will be flying in town to be able to address any of your questions and concerns as well at the meeting.
Environmental issues, then?
Yes, yes, so we'll have Barry Vitor there as well, who has been charged by Scannell, has been hired by Scannell to go through that permit process for them.
How long do you anticipate it would take to get the permit?
We don't have a date, they did the final walkthrough commissioner on Tuesday of this week, so we're waiting for final issuance now from, from, from the Corps of Engineers. We're hopeful that it's going to be before Christmas, but the, the court was not able to provide us an actual date for that. But to, but to, but to provide more, to make sure that everything does go into the proper place, that's why we added as a condition of the project agreement, that is only valid if we get the wetland permit, which we fully anticipate to get.
Very good.
But it's contingent on...
Right.
But if it doesn't happen, then we're out again, too.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Commissioners, I spoke to you and sent you some emails concerning the transfer of payroll responsibilities from the Treasury to the HR Payroll Department, and legal will have that on Monday's agenda.
Okay. I don't think, I don't think I got that yet. Did you, when was that sent?
I don't have it either.
Did you say you just sent it?
Oh, no, 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 it was just last week. Good. I talked to all three of you.
Yeah, you talked, I remember, we had the conversation, but I don't remember.
Let me check and see.
I've seen nothing in writing.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. If you would resend that, that would be great.
All right.
All right, any further?
Nothing else, Commissioner?
All right, Mr. Cagley?
We can get through, we can get some of the engineer budget.
Go ahead.
She wanted to rush on through here?
I've been trying, I'm dying over here.
Are you cold, really?
I'm freezing, jeez.
I thought it was just right. She hates it when I'm president.
I'm sorry. All right, Brian, sorry about that.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. We would ask that on Monday, you consider taking the following action. Item number 1, approve annual software maintenance agreement with Bentley Systems for the Engineering Public Works Department in the estimated amount of 4,420 dollars. That would be for a one-year period. Item 2, authorize the county engineer to serve as the authorized agent of the Mobile County Commission to complete and submit the petition for annexation to the City of Sims for a segment of Chingary Road, which is approximately 3,900 linear feet, adjacent to the area incorporated by the City of Sims on May 2nd, 2011.
So, so we're going to be the petitioner?
Yes, ma'am. The city incorporated back in May of 2011, which incorporated all the way up to a section line, which is basically the center line of a right-of-way of Chingary Road, and the city kind of assumed the maintenance of that segment of road because they included it in one of our page-to-go programs.
Right.
In Commission District 2 for resurfacing. We formally are the maintaining entity, and it's in on our books as us being the maintaining entity. City of Mobile, just in July, annexed up to the east right-of-way lines, we've got a small... We've got a small strip, half of a right-of-way through there that is unannexed by anybody. City of Sims has expressed a desire to take over maintenance of that section of road formally. And in order for them to do that, they're just going to go ahead and annex the remainder of that right-of-way. And this is us petitioning them to do that. We mulled it over, and that seems to be the shortest, best way to do this.
They're maintaining it anyway.
Yeah, I just never seen it.
This is the first time we've ever done this. After discussing it with the officials with the City of Sims, we came to this as the best resolve. And I filled out all the paperwork. I just need authority to submit it on y'all's name. So if y'all do that, I'll submit that next week.
So the the city limits right now runs down the center of the road. And so they're going to take over the maintenance of the other half of the road. What about the residents that live on that other side of the road? Will the will the count, will the city limits end at the roadway? Or will they be included and be annexed into the city?
The city limits will end at the east right-of-way line. So the people who are on the east side of that, they'll still be in the City of Mobile.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is just going to clean up something that was initiated back in twenty eleven. This will just clean all that up.
Okay.
Item three, approve preliminary plat only of Alden Park off of McLeod Road. This is a private road subdivision. Commissioners, seventy-three lots.
Who's the developer? Anybody know?
Matthew can probably tell us.
Or who is the developer and the builder, I guess?
Mr. Jimmy Lyon is the developer, and I don't know that he's selected a builder for the roadway yet.
I think I've made it no secret. I hate private road subdivisions, mainly because of the issues that they cause future county commissioners when these roads start to deteriorate. And I always am suspicious. I'm just putting this out there to Mr. Lyon. I'm always suspicious of why not just go ahead and do what the county would require you to do so that the county could assume maintenance of these roads unless there's some kind of issue that you already know is going to be an issue in the future. I guess my other question on it is, I'm assuming these are paved private roads? It's going to be a paved private road subdivision and not a dirt road subdivision?
Correct. The law does not allow any more, and our subdivision regulations do not allow any new unpaved roads. Mr. Lyons started the process as a county maintain road. And when the bids came in for what it would cost to construct them, it made the project infeasible to him. And so he is, he tells us he is trying to address the need for more affordable housing out in that portion of the county, which is why he is moving to the privately maintained roads.
And I understand that. The issue is that affordable housing now is going to become twenty years from now, some people living in a subdivision who have potholes and drainage issues and everything else. And they're going to be contacted in the county, and unfortunately, we're going to have to tell them those are private roads. And it's going to, when affordable housing has now become an issue where it could cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair their roads so they could get to their residence. I just, I, and it's exactly what I thought it was. There's some suspicious reason why he doesn't want to spend, and it's obvious he doesn't want to spend the extra money so that these residents in the future will be protected and have their roads maintained by the county.
Matthew, is there any way that we can require notification to buyers of these lots at the time of purchase that they understand that they're, the county has no maintenance responsibility now or in any time in the future? I mean, because a lot of them come back to us, and it's like, we didn't know. We didn't understand. Nobody told us. But if it's part of the document, if it's explained to them at the point of sale, then they have to, they would have to know. Is there any way that we can require that?
The document that actually divides the property will very clearly state that the roads are not maintained by Mobile County or by the state of Alabama. Most likely when.
What ends up, what happens, though, I think, is a lot of these affordable homes and new houses, it's young couples, and they're excited about, and they're in, they're in some closing office sign and their name a thousand times, and they're just excited about buying a brand-new home. And they, you know, you get, I've bought a house before, and you get to where you're just like, okay, what am I signing here? And you just sign it. And I think that's what, I think there is proper documentation, but I just.
It's part of some other, though. I think I'm talking about one, another, yet another document that they would have to specifically call to their attention that that is the situation. That they would have to sign off, that they understand that that is the parameters under which they're purchasing that property.
So many of these lots and these houses, these home construction things, we are, we're not really involved in the closing process. Once the, once the subdivision part of it is done, we don't really have that. If, we will have covenants for the maintenance of the drainage in there, and those covenants will also talk about the maintenance responsibility of the road. And their title search is going to indicate in their deed that, hey, these covenants apply to the property. Like so many of the terms and conditions on everything that we sign up on the internet to the banking these days, people often are not responsible enough to read all the details.
That's why you have to spoon feed sometimes, and I guess that's what I'm talking about. But I know it's already in the documents, but I was just wondering if there was a way to highlight it so that it, and it really might not matter anyway, what they're told at the point of closure. They're so excited. Down the road twenty years, they forgot it, or, you know, they're in desperate need, and somebody's got to help. You know, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anyway.
Are they going to have those blue private road signs?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to iterate that. I mean, I think every time one of these comes up, I bring up the fact that I'm, my displeasure in a private road subdivision, it just, and I don't want to stop people from doing what they want to do on their own piece of property, but this becomes a problem where the developer now owns it, and then he sells the lots, and people are living there. And I mean, I know you guys deal with it. I know I deal with it. And people sometimes just don't tend to understand, you know, I get the, I pay taxes, and this is a road that I have to get to my house. And people just don't understand sometimes what a private road subdivision is when they buy the house in there also. But but thank you for the.
But we know you're doing all you can.
We're doing as much as our regulations and the law will allow me.
Commissioners, there is one way, and I think Matthew could elaborate a little bit more. City of Mobile, they have upped their standards on private roads to a point where it matches what a developer would have to construct for a city-maintained road. We could do that, but it's going to increase the cost of development out in the county. That is within y'all's purview as a commission. It is outside our subdivision regulations. It's within our construction requirements. Is that not correct, Matthew? I believe that's correct.
Maybe that we need to look at it, at least see what we can do to upgrade from where we are.
Our, our private road requirements structural-wise are codified in the subdivision regulations. And so we would require the appropriate advertising and commission adoption. But it is absolutely within your ability to increase those standards.
Moving forward, maybe not.
So without an act of the legislature, without?
Without any act of the legislature, just completely within your, I will, you know, suggest there may be some outcry from the development community who is, who will tell you that you are making it harder for them to develop more houses and increase the tax base in Mobile County. But it is absolutely within your power and ability.
Purview to do that? No. I just thought I would mention that.
Thank you, Brian.
Open up.
Maybe we can take a look at that, and you kind of report back to us what that would entail, what we would need to do to do that.
Yes, ma'am. I will do.
That could probably, essentially, I guess, if we raise our standards of that, then they'll quit, they'll just make them public road subdivisions.
Same cost, and we assume maintenance. Why would they not do that?
But there are some that would still want gated communities and things like that. Those, those would still remain private, but at least the roads would be built to the standard that.
Well, most people who live in a private road with a gate at the end of it can probably afford to repair their own roads. But I think this subdivision is probably not one of those, if I had to guess. But anyway, I get it.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Okay, item four, approve final plat of Rossfield Phase One A and accept the road rights away as shown on the subdivision plat and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance by the County of Mobile and accept the warranty deed for the rights away as indicated on the plat. Commissioners, this is ninety-two lots out in West Mobile, District Three. Item five, approve final plat of Oakmont Place Phase One, accepting the road rights ways and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance and accept the warranty deed for the right-of-way of the roads indicated on the plat. This is forty-six lots out in. That is southwest Mobile, out off of Opus School Road. This is Commission District Three. Item six, approve final plat of Oakmont Place Phase Two, accept the road rights away as shown on the subdivision plat and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance by the county and accept the warranty deed for the rights away as indicated on the plat. This is an additional forty-nine lots in Commission District Three. Item seven, approve preliminary and final plat of Laneski Subdivision. This is in Commission District Three. Item eight, approve a CCP project number to design, for the design of the water and sewer lines along Sportsplex Drive by Neil Schaefer Incorporated in association with our Sportsplex Drive project. And Commissioners, this project bids next Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. Item nine, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds for a parcel on Murray Road. Item ten, approve an agreement for relocation of utility facilities in conflict, in conflict with proposed roadway improvements with South Alabama Utilities for our Mossapp Road Project. This allows twenty working days for the utility to relocate their facilities at no cost to the county. Item eleven, approve an agreement for relocation of utility facilities with Kusla Water District for that same Mossapp Road Project. This allows them twenty working days to complete their relocation efforts at no cost to the county.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Do you have anything? Did you have anything? I just want to make a couple announcements. Number one, I don't know if I announced this at the last meeting, but Memories Fish Camp is, and Boat Ramp is back open. It's a brand-new park, or renovated park, anyway. New parking lot, new parking for boats, new boat ramp, and a handicap accessible kayak and canoe launch at that park. So I wanted to make that announcement and also announce that we have started construction at Bayfront Park. I think the contractor has mobilized and started working there. And also, we have started construction on the infrastructure phase of the Mobile County Golf Course or Linksmann Golf Course, whichever one. We haven't named it yet, but construction has also started there, so I just wanted to make those announcements. All right. So if there's no further business, then we will adjourn until Monday, December the eleventh for the regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Thanks, everyone, for being here.